Just you know, we're not expecting anybody to join virtually.
So.
All right, thank you for everyone for attending tonight's regular monthly meeting of the Land and Wildlands Commission. Tuesday, August fifth on seven o'clock AM. Sherry, do you mind following up?
Larry Edwards. Edward Albarino.
Here.
Michael Florio.
Here.
Thomas Welch.
Here.
Robert Corson.
Here.
Christopher Horvath.
Here.
Scott Harley.
Here.
Mark Berno. Amy Handler. Douglas Elliott.
Yeah.
For Larry. So, all house cleaning items, we have minutes from April first. It's like all kind of regular meetings that will be approved, so we're doing separately. So, I get a motion to approve the minutes from our regular monthly meetings from April. So, look, so, website.
Was, um, Chris. And it was Mike.
Any discussion? All right. The, 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 say hi.
Hi.
Posers thing. And then I'll give a motion to approve the April first special meeting.
That probably got a.
No, like, right?
No, that wasn't, um, that wasn't a cycle. I, I think that was the, um, it might have said around emails, but it wasn't, I think it wasn't the attorney.
It'd be like, oh, it was a special meeting, yeah.
Yeah.
In training, we don't have this.
Um, yeah, me too.
Yeah, me too. Okay, so it's, um, that was the regular meeting. And now we'll do the, um.
This was the attorney.
Change title. Oh, it's just on the agenda. Who was that? Who pulled on? Uh.
Any discussion? We're gonna say that, hi, posers thing. And then there's some charities.
Mark, good, yeah. We started seven.
Oh, so Marcus here, but. Marco right.
That's something. Right, item agenda number three, you see back to patients. I have the requests patients. And I, those I offer this month. Uh, item number four administrative review. There's two requests for release of inland wetlands. So, the first one is eleven, narrowing score bond IWC twenty-three dash eleven, the amount of a thousand dollars. Was map seventy-three, block forty-four, lot four dash two, lot eleven. Um, application for, for irregular, regulated activities in inland wetlands. Working around swimming pool, patio. Need for this back in November of twenty-three. Well, this did you.
So, in my, um, when I sent you, I sent you off the ports with photos, my recommendation draft motion, and all the department documents, including the minutes. So, um, our recommendation was to approve. Um, and if you'd like the, the motions in there, uh, drafted, if you'd like to use it.
And, uh, no problem. I need most to approve the bonds east of a thousand dollars for application. I W C twenty-three dash eleven for eleven, derailing for repair. Actually, he mentioned he'd be there in eleven, so. Ten grounds, summer pools, and full ground. Proved by records, this second man. About eleven, blueprints, landings. Chitlin Hill Road, something, I think, oh, six, four, one, three, April, June, seventh. Twenty twelve, revised November, eighteen, twenty twenty-three. The conditions are approved to repair, such as engineering, quality, as all conditions of who have been met, verified by the. That is wrong.
My second. There's any discussion, or these other bond?
Yes. There's questions.
All right, all those other favor say that?
Yeah.
Anyone on poser team? Which varies. So, the second one is for release, for, for ask for release for nine hundred dollar bond. That's for I W C eleven, dash, zero, zero, five, R, forty-four Fish Plain Road. That's map seventy-five, block fifty-two, lot nine, dash two. Or grading for a house. And for forty-six Fish Plain Road, map seventy-five, block fifty-two, lot twenty-nine. Grading for a driveway to prove by that, and see in December, one eleven. That's a long one. I guess Kathy, any of that, Josie, that shouldn't be released.
Yeah, so I, I did another report, and then I'm doing inspection photos, and there's another draft motion, if you'd like to use it. There's two separate emails, um, because it was too big. So, I meant it, um, that I couldn't put both in the report, so I did the report, and then jacked out some other things that I sent to set.
Long time.
Have a hard topic to this, if you'd like.
It is because being managed. There was another.
This is Amy.
Oh. My head is.
Amy.
Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve the end of the bond at least a nine hundred dollars. I W C dash eleven, dash, zero, zero, five, R, for forty-four Fish Plain Road, map seventy-five, block fifty-two, lot twenty-nine, dash two, grading of the house. And forty-six Fish Plain Road, map seventy-five, block fifty-two, lot twenty-nine, grading of the driveway approved by the, in the right hands on. Twelve, six, two thousand eleven, for site and well member, and prepared by test, and associated P C, in accordance with the Arken Engineering, for forty-four and forty-six Fish Plain Road, for Mr. Dahl, and the roots, this is not staff. In Atlanta, two, two thousand eleven, by guys twelve, two, two thousand eleven sheets, one of two, and two of two, Captain, Michael, Arthur, Arkin, P E, Papier, Tom, and Drew Pitts. As all conditions approved have been met, verified by reference, of course, in office, Kathy, Simone.
And the second, that, twenty seconds, and then. A little bit, if they would say that, hi, posers thing. The charities. Uh, item agenda number five, correspondence.
You know that Dany came in for the record.
Oh, hey, me, Maria. Uh, everybody. I can't believe you.
Hi. Sorry, I went to the wrong room.
Okay. Are you?
Yeah, I looked at the paintings on the wall.
Item agenda number five, correspondence, just a whole.
Yeah, just notices, there's no action required, but, um, they have to, you know, let us know if they're doing treatment for, you know, any kind of aquatic issues, so they're, you know, they affect people and everything. So, just to know why.
Very little correspondence.
Okay.
Then, again, number six, old business, it's a problem, I didn't hold business.
Yeah. What ever happened to the last three really light ones?
So, there was seven Baxter rooms, so what happened with that one was, I know, so I, I talked with the property owner. He said, what he wanted to do is build something, and I told him, it's a very tricky lot, it's very wet. I don't know if we would meet sound backs, I don't know if we could get a sound fix system, so he's working with Michael Harken and John Bear. So, I told him that, you know, like, I met with Mike, and he said he's gonna work with him on it, and I said, if you can build something, you know, we'll look at it, if not, and he's not, he's not cutting anything, he was going, so, you know, he was, he was cutting it.
Yeah, but he was cutting right up against, uh.
He was cutting up towards eleven, so he was told to stop, and then I was gonna have to, you know, have to re-remediation, but if he's gonna build something, he's gonna have to do that.
Yeah, it's on the form, why we didn't see one of us.
Yeah, so Mike Harken is, it's.
So, it's still open.
Very much so.
All right, there's one there.
Yep.
There's something.
Sure.
I remember when the guys seen, seen Harper's there.
Oh, I'm on thing.
Yes.
So, that one, um, actually, I really took care of, because I was had a medical issue, um, he came by I Q to you.
He didn't once, but he never came back.
Yeah, he took care of all the plantings that he wants to take. Um, I guess that was whenever the commissioner recommended he do a re-remediation. Yeah, that was kind of on his size out for a couple months. So, yeah, I don't think he took care of that. Um, and the other one is three hundred pitch, which, if you guys remember, that came out, um, it's kind of a tricky situation of working versus changing at the end, because we brought two guys for farm, but it didn't have a special exception farm status.
Which is.
Approved, trying to zone between a pitch. So, we talked to our town attorney, to figure out what the class should be, because typically, wetlands, because before zoning, but in this instance, he's gonna need the, a, um, special exception earth farm, and come here, so they're working.
There's a motion, I mean.
Yeah, so they're working on all the applications, so we, I really had multiple meetings, but, um, so, and, um, soon. It's been a way for town attorney, well, I figured out the path, because it was an hard one, it's, it's called a catch, I'm sure. Work well.
You guys work on it?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Of course.
Yeah.
Any other old business?
No, no, um, uh, it's actually, maybe part of it is, is like, you know how I call you, or something, perfect, perfect, you said it's here, I'm, you know, out with, uh, very official, so, and, um, if we said you have, can you keep our names up? We're, we're not making, like, we're not making.
Yeah, so.
Because it puts us, puts us in.
Yeah.
And that because, if, if, if we put our names in it, like, horse's name is in one, I was in one. If, I'm just being honest with you, yeah, um. If you're, it's just puts us in an awkward, awkward, awkward position.
It's an awkward.
Always, I won't stand anything else, because I don't want my name on it, you want your name on it?
No, I just, I can speak, and why not? No, I was quite upset at that, to be honest. Because I asked you to put any permits, and automatically, I go to the application in my name, says a complaint. All right. I was not gonna reduce myself, came in front of us, because I didn't feel I was complaining. I was asking if there are any applications, and you were not gonna look, and with violation. All right. As a commission, you asked to go to you with problems, not to answer, answer things for people. If we don't have that avenue to come to you, and say, look, is this an application for this? Uh, you know, it's supposed to come to you, and if you put our name on it, that leaves us out of decisions here. And so, as part of the commission, you were asked, when we shut down the chain to you, bring this up to me.
You, you.
So, the way, the way it works is, I don't think, is, our system for inspections is completely useless. So, the problem is, if it's something that's, say, on East Main Street, I drive by every day. But if it's out in the middle of nowhere, the complaint is gonna wonder why I'm up there, and how I knew about it. So, usually, what we do is, we have, you know, something that there is a source, otherwise, how would I know it was there? So, I mean, I'll talk about policy, this isn't, this isn't the first time it's been issued, because we have a lot of people who say, well, I'm going to my neighbor, I don't want my name on it, and will sometimes suggest they put in a fake email, because technically, I have to have a source to go inspect or complete.
So, Richard, excuse you all through, sorry, Richard came to my house to close up my windows. And he's a good guy, he's, he's a smart guy, because he saved my ass with, with the, um, uh, my, what they know, generator. You know, it had no effect, now, I didn't go, he said, I'm fired, this guy, I didn't notice. It wasn't him, a wind would have took the propane into, into my generator, blew up the whole house. But he fixed that, but when he was out there, he went across the street, followed violation, and, and then he went next door, followed violation.
So, there's violations.
I said, you know, I'm gonna worry, it's time, I said, I said, I don't care what you do, I said, you can go next door, you know, I don't care, I mean, I didn't, I mean, I can't, I didn't complain, so, I don't want my name on it, I don't want my name on it, I, I say full.
But see, that's an instance where Mitch was out there as a town official, and then if he says something, he lets me know.
Exactly.
And then we go to the system.
Right.
So, I, I mean, I'm not, I can, I can certainly talk to them and see what a workaround would be.
Because you know, I sent you a million pictures of many violations.
Yeah.
And you never put my name on anything, but now, after Robert, if, if, well, just, we like, I don't, I don't feel my name should have been on it either, because you had another person go over complaining, there was two people that said complaining, so it was really, was more me putting the pain in, uh, less, less, put the pain into, obviously, so.
Chad, what was that?
I don't know those last thing, but if we don't have an avenue to go to you, I know there's a lot of violations going on, but I'm not gonna go to you, because I need to be able to rule on it here, and if you put me down and complaining, I can't. There's violations all over town, there now, it's a mess, it's not my fair to even talk to you. I don't even wanna call you, because I don't want my name going on again, and that's how stressful. Because we were appointed to this commission, and you were job, and if we can't go to you, our officer, to look into something without getting our name tied, so we can't start here, we're driving by too. This is our town, we all live in it, and we volunteer our time here to do this, and to have our names put on a complaint, while we just ask you, you know, the, 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 where I can go on here, see if there's inland wetlands, uh, application. And.
Well, there, there is.
Right, so, we need to hear about that one, and I just don't feel that there has to be a workaround, because we as board here, either they're showing you, not ask, that's not the thing for people, or I think, or anybody, and when we come to you, we, we get locked out of decision. You know, and from doing our job that we were appointed to do. So, it is very upsetting. I'm gonna say it right now.
We need to figure for Chad.
Well, again, I, I mean, it, it's, it's the system, you know what I'm saying, I didn't create it, it's, that's probably what it's a complaint based system.
But when I.
So, I'll, I'll see what I can do, and if there's a workaround.
Thanks, Mike, I, I appreciate, because you know what, you guys said your stuff, I mean, all the time.
But, you know, again, if, if, if a person says, well, where did this come from, and it's, I mean, I.
Say, I'm, I'm fine, it's something we've done a lot.
Well, it can also lie.
You know, I'm, 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 I'm.
It's selective enforcement either, you know, I'm never out there and all, you know, so, I, I think, try to figure out what this is for, you know.
Yeah, a commission.
As you say, a commission member drove by and seen it, informed me, and now do the need, right, we're a commission, right?
We're a commission.
Yeah, I, I, I will look into it, I will.
Thanks, Kai.
I, I, my understanding is that, you could, there are situations where you can maybe complain against neighbors that they have, you know, unregistered vehicles, parrotting in their yard, and the house is falling apart, whatever it is, that you don't, don't have to put your name in it.
We, we, we usually, because again, there has to be a source, so it can't just be, uh, like, because I've been asked a lot of times, you know, well, I don't get along with my neighbor, or whatever, to, to each other, you know, it is, it's a sticky wicket, and so, I, I need to find out what would be the best. Because right now, it's a complaint based system, that's how we do it. People put in a complaint online, and then I get it, then I go to do the inspections, so.
Because it's stuff going on all over town, then, I'm not gonna say, allow myself out of decision. I think that's just poor, very poor for the commission. It upsets me.
I heard you, yeah. Yeah.
Cool, thank you, I appreciate you, thanks. All right, so, that's all business, those, item agenda number seven, happy year, work for, you had a couple things on.
So, the only thing that's a big deal is, um, the training, so, there are changes in the legislature that, um, you know, in, uh, planning and zoning commissioners, and Z B A commissioners, need to have training, and it's, it's not a lot. I mean, honestly, it's just a few hours every year, um, they are already ten years expired. So, the legislative reported to change, not inland wetlands, also in training commissioners. So, I, I send everybody an attachment, it's just a summary, but basically, it needs to be the only one member or staff person who's required to complete the Connecticut D E P complex of training, which I think is silly. Why would you get one member completed? Um, now, all the members are required to be completed, it's online, it's free. Um, so, it says there's a deadline for existing members and staff, those serving on the H P C as of January one, twenty twenty-six, must complete initial training within, within one year of that date, beginning January one, twenty twenty-seven. So, the modules are self-paced, um, you can stop whenever you want, if you wanna spend an hour, and then you get a phone call, you can go back in, and take off where you were, I believe there's eight modules, it says it takes eight hours, but it's actually more than that, that you can, again, self-paced. Um, but, sorry?
Call the bureau.
Then there's.
Service.
There's.
Go your cell, right now, so.
There's a deadline for new members and staff, um, individuals appointed left for hire to back with January one of twenty twenty-six, must complete the training within one year of their start. Um, the retraining, all members and employees, is now retrained every four years, or once per term, because serving terms longer than four years, whichever is less frequent. Um, there's online training, and four-headed people now, pay the training, put a little online, which I just, you guys heard, ironically, I was gonna do it anyway, because it's been five years, and then speaking requirement. Um, agencies are also required to submit an annual report to the municipal body, um, starting March twenty twenty-seven, confirming that everybody is completing the change, so it is an arm system, you do get a certificate after you complete the training, so, we would just ask that we email it to us, so that we know that you've done it. Um, it, it says validity of actions unaffected, it's important to note that the only thing is that failure to complete the training does not invalidate actions taken by inland wetlands. But we've heard, and totally, that it could maybe affect funding points if we don't do it, so, they don't have a hammer right now, but it may eventually.
Excuse me, is it clear or something, clear or something?
So, clear does, the, um, land use training, but this is specifically what land is training, so this is the, the best way to get it is through the D program.
Okay.
And it is, it is pretty, it's a road pace, so like I said, if you have some time, you could take it, you can, or you don't, you know, you can go back to it.
Yeah, Maury just sent me, well, I, I, I got seven and a half hour.
Because you're planning and zoning, so you have both, so you need to do the training for planning and zoning as a commission member, and then the training for wetlands.
Okay. Will you send a link for?
Sure.
Yeah, like the official name of it.
Yep.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Is it off the curve?
Yeah, speaking on, I, I started to begin, um, so, like I said, it, and the other opinion is, at this point, they're saying it's important to note that here's, complete the train does not invalidate the actions of the agency, but they're worried that that may change, if people aren't all trained, then at some point in time, I don't know, it could become a problem.
Is this something all, all kinds, maybe?
Everything, yeah, it's happened, and, uh, it is pretty wonderful, I mean, you start off, they explain what we have, what it's are, um, why they're important, you know, different things like bogs versus rivers, or slakes versus intermittent water sources and earth.
I'm sorry, yeah?
So, it really does all that. And, um, and then each module kind of has a thing, and at the end of each module, there's like a fun quiz, you can do a game, or you can do a, the quiz, and then at the end, you need to take the exam. It's not that long, but if you don't have, it was an eighty-year pub, there, it could, we go back to it. Um, and then the H P S.
Take notes.
Yeah, I have to do minutes, I also, we don't remember that one. And I just had the legislation things to enhance all the patients with training, those involved in patrolling inland wetlands, ensuring they're well equipped to catch and protect these important natural resources, and it's so true, because there's been a lot of changes to our, on the board, C A C E W I D, which is Connecticut Association of Conservation and inland wetlands commissioners. And, um, with the current, you know, situation in recovery, we're losing a lot from doing, um, for wetlands and, um, doing things like that, so it's really important that the training is, you know, you know, has best handles some of these applications, run downs, development, protection. But also, you're talking about maybe changing my carry numbers, maybe changing it from one hundred feet out to more, so there's a lot of different things that are coming on, because they wanna really make sure of tech, not just the weapon, but how to, not with incentive. So, it's, it's a really great training, I, I've done it, and this weekend, I'm starting to get them, and people enjoy it. But then you.
I agree, the C A F E R. Uh, it's one of the rules, I'm trying to.
Yeah, and this, this one is, like I said, it's a road pace, so you can do it in your pajamas, you know, anytime you want.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I just completed, of course, it sounds, doesn't have the longer describe.
No, not.
Not, it's.
No. It, it was, there will be a little bit of overlap, but this one is specifically inland wetlands.
Yeah, that's all of this, so, clear, they do land use training, so, you might want to do, like, you know, how we need properly, um, some of the basics of, you know, planning, starting with the different types of decisions we'll go on, and, and applications. This is specifically learning about inland wetlands, their function, their value, um, and why they're important, and, you know, again, what all the different kinds are, and things like that.
And you'll send this for me to.
I will, I'll do it in the morning, yeah, I'll make it know right now.
I would think that if there's any litigation, attorney would be asking if all the commission members, right, and.
I think that's what I'm saying, we're saying, you know, but I heard with planning, towing training, that that could become an issue too, if people aren't shooting them, someone who got to murder, for example, could say, well, you didn't all have your training. You know, I, I, I'm saying, I don't know a real fact, but it's just what I heard, you know.
Makes sense.
Yeah. Because they wanna make sure, because wetlands are some type, and it's really hard to understand sometimes, because people will say that there's no water in my area. Um, it's because of four, it's soils that constitute inland wetlands, so you can't see them. So, people get confused, when they contact me, and they're like, you know, can I put something here, and I say, well, you're within fifty, you don't have water. You know, and it's like, but it's a soil type, so, it, it is, is kind of harder to understand than some of the other, other things, like flood, you see, you know, water, it's an obvious one, I'm a flood zone, but not so much.
So, whenever we complete any training, we do the, the, or, yeah.
Yeah, well, of course, yeah, the, and they'll, they'll do a training certificate after the modules, then you just mail it to me, and then I'll make sure that we know that you've completed it. And like I said, the deadline is for existing members, um, they have to complete it by January one of twenty twenty-seven. And for new members, collected, or appointed after January one of twenty twenty-six, they have one year from their start date.
We all have until twenty seven.
Yes, so, and if I, and I'm attached, talking this to me a jungle as well, so, you can start with my questions, but if you need to look at it.
You, you could send us that link, or.
Yeah, now, I'm actually, um, I can, you can keep on for the, the actual training.
Sure.
I just, and you need to know something of what this is, but I'll, then do that tomorrow, and I'll, I'll have the link.
You should. I don't know, very long word. Your name on it. Obviously, well. Okay, I'm not, you know, I'm not sure we look at it, it's.
I know.
Um, all right, so Kathy, thank you, that's your report, so. Item number eight, new business, have any new business?
We don't have any on this.
Um, so, since there's no new application, you've heard quite a lot this month, so, maybe we'll have a meeting that month. But, I'm on the safe side, and so, if there's nothing to chat about, cancel the meeting again.
Can I ask you a question, uh, on this?
Sure.
Um, we do approve, we do approve the losses.
Mm-hmm.
Who recommends, is this the staff, this is town?
Everybody's, we often ask the town engineer to give us an estimate of bond, um, for some of the smaller projects, a lot has been making recommendations. So, for example, among the anti-coziner complex, um, properties, so we asked the town engineer to recommend bond, um, that's usually.
That makes me very excited, right?
I did like a calculation, uh, about six years ago, so I should revise it, because of inflation. But I did, I did it based on square footage, and we did it on small, medium, large.
Wondering if I need the extra launch.
Yeah, so, square footage of impacts within the regulated area. And then, I pasted on unit prices for soil excavation, so that's, assuming that, like, if someone starts a project, gets halfway through and abandons it, now the town's gotta come and fix it, which are complaining, you'd most likely need an excavator out there, uh, or greater soil, purpose sound, and so that's. So, I took unit pricing from Connecticut D O T, access to it, and came up with average ranges, but now that's five years old, and it's probably double those costs.
That was great, we have you to do.
Yeah, okay. So, now that I have nothing to do, um, I'll, I'll look at revising, seeing for bonds, and I'll come next meeting with an updated schedule, and.
We don't, we don't have a next meeting, if we get an answer on, on the thing.
Mm-hmm.
The, all of us, just something, just so we know where to go forward, come.
Okay.
That'd be appreciated.
So, you might draw up the business first, next month, instead of signing?
No, it, it doesn't. There's a lot, it shouldn't be a, it's, it's on town, it's, 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 you're.
It should be a word.
Really, it really is. You know, so, let's, see. I want my name on.
It's not good for the town.
I want, I want my name on there. I mean, my name, my neighbors, who. It's, oh. I was going up, it's a, in chat, boom. I said, you picture, and that's how we see him. You know, it's fine.
That was before the system, new system.
We have opened up now, so it's a different system, we used to have, it's a different complete system.
And you go on, all things, kind of, I was.
So, yeah, it used to be people use paper forms, we don't do that anymore.
I know, I know, I understand.
Yeah, it's a completely system where people have to send.
But we didn't know what to do with that, I'll be honest.
Okay.
All right, uh, I think your chair comments, committee comments for this month, um, so, with that, the data. Alright, uh, I think your chair comments, the day comments for this month, um, so, with that, the day of motion, no turn.
Um, I mean, what should you do here?
I had, said, any special, those are, okay? Alright, thank you, everybody, nice quick meeting, we're, we're.
Good to see everybody again.
Anywhere, first few billion of, uh, we start promptly at seven minutes.
Okay.
It's usually there's application. Very weird, I think one would be big on, pretty often.
Yeah, one meeting, I, it's a weird.